Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. It's being held on a Tuesday night, this January 21st, 2020, because of the celebration of Martin Luther King Day yesterday. It is after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be held Monday, February 3rd, 2020. I'll remind council, although I know Mr. Ansel won't be here and miss all that great cuisine there at the hospital. But next week, the annual hospital dinner with council is at 5:30, Monday, the 3rd. Okay, that being said, would you please call the roll, Mr. Polo?
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Bastancic?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
Everyone's here, so we definitely have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented, and at this time, I would ask you to stand with the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of January 6th, 2020.
So move, Mr. President.
Motion to approve by Mr. Silvestri is second by Mr. Myers, who I'll learn to spell his name maybe by the time his term's done here on council. Two more years. At this time, I would also ask for approval of the committees, which won't change unless someone's vehemently opposed to being on the committees that they're on. There was no change from the last term from 2018 through 2019.
Just to back up, we never all said aye for the approval of the minutes.
Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the approval of the minutes of January 6th, 2020 are approved. Any opposition to remaining on the same committees, be careful what you wish for if you want to change. You might also have another committee that you get booted off as well, but...
I move to approve your city, or I'm sorry, council committee appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Motion by Ms. Warden to approve the committee assignments, second by Mr. Bastancic. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they're approved, and I will make sure when the final one gets out, I spell your name properly. I apologize, Mr. Myers.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, welcome, and good to see you, and we look forward to what you have to say this evening.
Thank you, President Biden, I think members of council, good evening to all, and look forward to the meeting. Just a few things to bring your attention to. Something that is really a very important planning tool for the city, and it's something that's been around for decades, is called a facility planning area. And Joel sent something out to all of you, so I'm just sort of reinforcing this. On February 4th, down at the Wayne County Public Library, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, there's going to be a member of NEFCO, Northeast Four County Organization, which the city's been a member of since, oh, in the 80s. And it's an area that, or a group whose expertise is to help communities in their planning of wastewater and water systems, what areas your community is going to serve. And you go outside of your community lines, because you're really supposed to be envisioning where you're going to be in 20 years or 30 years. So it's a planning tool, and it just gives good guidance. Well, this area is becoming an important component for our city up in the Mel Lane area, so it's pretty interesting that that was the conversation of the meeting prior to this. But it's how we, as a city, would sewer this area. And we have what's called a red line, and it's a line on the map that was put there 10 years ago, and 10 years before that, and so on. The area up around Mel Lane actually goes out to the intersection of Guyer Chapel Road up with Smithville Western, is where this is an interesting topic for us, because we believe that we will be faced within the next 20 years of sewer-ing that area. It flows into our gravity system, because we have a gravity system up in that area, so the topography of the land comes towards Worcester. It's about 2,000 feet away from the city border right now. Smithville is the other community that has a red line in this area, and it's about 8,400 feet away from their community. So it's an important component for us. They're going to be describing this. NEFCO is the agency that really makes the decision, and then represents that to the EPA down the way. So if you can make the February 4th meeting down at the library, I think it would be well worth your time, and so you understand the whole topic, and it's something that I can't do in a matter of minutes today tonight. So put that on your calendar, if you would. I think it would be good for you and for our city that we all go into this eyes wide open. Another thing I wanted to bring you up to date on, actually, Tim Monet pointed it out to us. Cleveland Magazine is a publication, north of here, you know, a pretty respectable publication. They talk about a paradox prize that the Fund for Our Economic Future actually is sponsoring. And it came home to us here in Worcester because of the transportation system that we've been putting together and have been working on for a number of years now. And our partner in that, the Community Action Group here in Worcester. So it's $100,000 grant to Community Action for this paradox prize, because they're saying that our city really has done some neat things in conjunction with Community Action in creating the transportation system that we have serving our community. So it's something that is a pretty neat thing. I know Joel and our rec team has been really the guiders on this whole prospect going forward, because we've always nested the taxi service under the recreation piece, started decades ago. And why recreation was picked, I don't have a good answer for that, but that's where it's always been nested under. And about three years or so ago, we decided to work with Community Action, because they deal with the public and the people who need the taxi passes. And so we studied different areas, especially Athens, Ohio, because they have a very good transit plan down there. And so Joel and the Community Action Team and our rec team sort of took the lead on this. So Joel, I'll turn it over to you to talk about this a little bit more in detail.
Okay, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight, and you're aware of some of the ridership and some of the improvements that have made in that program when we presented it here late last year. But the reason they won the whole article and what they're talking about are some barriers to employment workforce, and the early communities that have done certain things. One of the reasons that Community Action won it is because of the ability to get people to work, people that can't afford a car. But obviously, we know there's, you know, there's some issues with work force, not just here, but everywhere, so getting those people to work, that's one solution, and trying to solve that work force problem of people that don't have a car but need a way to get to work. And I don't know how many run email recently, but Leslie Bousch from Community Action sent out, it just, it was on, here's all of the businesses that are utilizing our cantation program to get people to work that don't have another way to get to work. So that was one of the reasons they won that. And then the other one was just because of how well it has done by expanding, you know, almost exponentially, 500 riders to 16, under 500, over 1500 riders here just this last year. And, you know, the one thing they did also point out is, you know, the one way to really take it to the next step, or to really improve, will be to make it count by, you know, so that there's a way for people, say from West Side, working in Worcester, they can get to Worcester. We're sort of limited, we subsidize Worcester, just the immediate area outside, but one of the things that they recognize was that would be one way to take it to the next step, and the county line program as well. I know Community Action's working on some other parts, but it's nice to be recognized as something that has really worked really well.
Great. Thank you, Joel, and then to the team that really worked hard to put this plan together. Leslie Bousch did send this email out on last Friday, and she is our mobility manager for Community Action. She said, "We are transporting people to manufacturing employers along the Route 585 corridor, and are now including Buckeye Container, Tech 4 off Long Road, as well as Advanced Drainage Systems, Stalls, Tricor, that are located on Old Mansfield Road, just west of the industrial park where Speed North America, Frito-Lay, and RBB are located." And I know Luke, or I'm in Scheffler, and the folks out on the old airport road also have this transportation ability. So it really has been a good thing for our community, and Cleveland Magazine thought we were doing it right, so it's sort of nice to have outside recognition of something that we've been working on here in town. One other thing I wanted to point out to you, another very important thing, because it brings a lot of dollars into our community, is the census. It's going to be kicking off here within the next month. Andrew Dutton and Jonathan Malley are going to be our two in-house staff that are really tasked with working together with the count that count, or the count committee in the county. I've been also involved in the thing. Just a couple numbers that should light your eyes up. $33.5 billion were allocated to Ohio in the last census. It was based on the count, and I know there were areas of our community that were undercounted the last time. The College of Worcester is one that we believe was undercounted. But it brings dollars back to our state in programs such as all these federal things, but Medicaid is, gets dollars from the numbers that are achieved through the census. Student loans, the SNAP program, which was originally the Food Stamp Program, and now is called the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. Medicare Part B. Highway planning and construction, so a lot of our highway dollars come through this. Section 8 housing, things like CDBG funds, and other type of grants come through, education grants, Homeland Security, all of those things, and they're based on the census numbers. So it's really important to have as clear of a count as we possibly can. So about mid-March, people are going to receive a mailing from the government talking about the census and what is coming. And then April 1st is actually Census Day. People can do it online this year, by the phone, through the mail, or somebody will come door-to-door if you haven't responded to any of those others. So very important thing, please talk it up in the community, that really we need people to be counted for the best bang for our buck. And just a final thing, we've been working on some city videos to tie into our website, our city website. We've got three about finished up that we'll be rolling out here, probably within the next couple of weeks or so. One is Welcome to Worcester video. It'll tie in and just give a very brief overview of our community, so if somebody's surfing around the internet, they might pop on it and maybe find a reason to look a little bit closer at our community. Another is with our PD, and then a lot of the good work they're doing. And then one is from our wastewater treatment plant, because of things like the energy that we're producing out of the waste stream, and what we've received, the ICMA award for that Joel received for us a few months ago, or a month ago. So I just wanted to draw your attention that we might see something on our website or hear something from people in the community. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, President Biden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We had no petitions, and no one signed up, signed the sign-in sheet, so we'll move to committee reports. And Mr. Bastancic, you held an infrastructure committee meeting.
Yes, thank you. We have an infrastructure committee meeting directly before tonight's meeting, and the purpose of this meeting was for an overview of the various communications and meetings that have been held over the last, since prior, since last spring, between the residents of Mel Lane and Mellon Drive concerning storm drainage issues. Roger Kobelarsik started off the meeting with a review of what had happened with what was, had been, of the meetings that had been going on over the previous, let's say, nine months. And then after that, we had a Q, we left most of the time for a Q and A session with the residents, so we can get a feeling of what they really wanted to do, and to make sure we all had the same facts. This is the first time all the interested parties have really have been under one roof. Before, it was either council members and a city official going out, or a council member going by themselves, or a city official going by themselves to meet with the residents. This way, everybody, the purpose was to get everybody on the same page. And so that made, I think it made it easier to come up to some sort of conclusions. We had a lot of back and forth about the various issues with it, and Roger had given them four possible ways, and this had been given to them earlier as well, four possible solutions to their problems, and they sort of zeroed in on one, which I think we'll probably end up going with. We're going, they're going to talk to the rest of the community, the rest of the residents on the community, and get back to us. And I feel somewhat optimistic that a solution has been arrived at, that we can somehow, hopefully, come, get the wheels moving on this, and have something completed this summer, and get this, hopefully, help their flooding situation, or their drainage situation over those two lanes. Good meeting, I thought. I thought it really went well, and I thought we actually, we got something done tonight. It really felt good.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Bastancic. No unfinished business. We do have three items under new business. First two will be presented by Mr. Silvestri. Both of them are budgeted. Before we get to Resolution Number 2020-D07, or before I turn it over to Mr. Silvestri, I'll ask our clerk of council to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2020-07. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for water treatment plant clarifier tank improvements, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our two clarifier tanks in our wastewater, in our water treatment plant, were inspected recently, and the recommendation as a result of the inspection was that they should be repainted or recoded. The coating on these tanks has currently lasted us 24 years. They were last painted in 1996. And I want to thank Roger and his staff for being willing to take care of the engineering design and the administration portion of the construction of the project. But we are going to bid out the work, and this is a resolution authorizing us to do that. The cost is set to come out of the water fund. As the president indicated, it is budgeted, so I will be asking for a suspension of the rules.
No, you won't.
I'm sorry.
It's budgeted, Mr. Silvestri.
I'm sorry. I will not be asking for a suspension of the rules. It is not necessary. Thank you. So I would move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any other comments, questions?
Just a quick question. What does a new tank cost?
What does a new tank?
Yeah, so we're coding them, yes. I'm just curious.
What's your question again?
Clarifier.
A new clarifier.
A new clarifier.
Yeah.
Don't have that, I mean, a million dollars?
How much?
I mean, it's inside the tank, it's inside the building, and it's a tank in the ground.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's concrete around with the device in the middle, so, yeah, you'd have to expand the water treatment plant in order to get a new tank.
So that's in there for the duration, pretty much?
Correct.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
You've had a lot of time speaking, and you've been quite eloquent. Maybe public speaking is in your future there, Mr. Kobelarsik.
He thought he was done.
Thanks a lot.
Anything further?
No.
Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolutions Number 2020-07 passes.
That brings us to Resolution Number 2020-08. As I said, it'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri, and it is budgeted, but Mr. Polo, would you please read the title before I turn it back over to Mr. Silvestri?
Resolution Number 2020-08. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the placement of a sanitary sewer main line on Prospect Street, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Silvestri, I turn the floor back over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yet another resolution authorizing our Director of Administration to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for a sewer replacement project. This is an outdoor project, and what it is, is there are two homes that share a lateral on Prospect Street, and right now, it is a, it is a six-inch pipe. We're going to go to an eight-inch pipe, so it's going to take that shared lateral and put a main in there instead. There's going to be three additional sanitary sewer manholes put in as a result of that. We want to prevent any possible sewer backups in the future. Shared laterals is not a good practice, and so we look for these and try to fix them, and this is an opportunity to do just that on Prospect Street. I do not need to suspend the rules, so I hereby move for adoption.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any other question? Seems straightforward. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2020-08 passes. We have an executive session scheduled to discuss purchase of property. To do so, I will need someone to make a motion to go into executive session, someone to second it, and then it'll be a roll call vote, so...
Motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Myers moves to go into executive session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to go into executive session?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
All right, we are going in an executive session and going off the record at the moment.
I want to make a motion to second, and...
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ansel to come out of executive session.
Sanders.
Mr. Sanders, second. Now we need a roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
We are, we have just voted to come out of executive session, and we're back on
the record. It's our final piece of legislation tonight. It'll be presented by Ms. Warden. It is slated for three readings. Are we on now?
I hope so.
We hope so. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Ms. Weller acknowledges she can hear us. Would you please read Resolution Number 2020-09?
Resolution Number 2020-09. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with Five L Farm LLC for the purchase of land and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, the city administration has secured an agreement to purchase 138.66 acres of land, currently known as Five L Farm, for the price of $2,026, or $14,424.49 an acre. I'd like to note that currently, the average price of land in Wayne County is upwards of $22,000 per acre, just a little sidebar. The property is located in the northeast side of town between Melrose Drive and Guyer Chapel Roads. It is shovel-ready with municipal water services, and after the completion of Daisy Way, it will be accessible by industrial-grade roads. In addition to the local infrastructure, the land has easy highway access and ideal topography for many different potential industrial uses. Passage of this resolution would provide the city with a unique economic development opportunity. It would establish its first publicly-owned industrial park. Currently, Worcester lacks adequately-sized shovel-ready industrial sites, leaving us out of the running for new and/or business expansion projects. The acquisition of this land would remove that obstacle, allowing for further economic growth. Upon council approval, the city plans to immediately file for annexation of the portion of the land that does not lie within the city limits. This would make the property a desirable prospect for potential industrial development. Additionally, the city plans to prepare the land for Site Ohio authentication through Jobs Ohio, ensuring that the site would be a top-marketed property throughout the state. The city's finance director, Mr. Dordia, proposed that the property be purchased using cash from the city's 2020 appropriations. The dollars which were earmarked for projects that were presented as part of the city's 2020 infrastructure plan would be funded through tax-exempt bonds. This arrangement would allow the city to take advantage of the tax exemption benefits of bond funding while fulfilling its commitment to improve infrastructure. The Wayne County Economic Development Council is prepared to assist with funding of due diligence studies on the land, and has also secured some additional funding from AEP Ohio for similar studies to be conducted. And unless, oh, wait, I was going to say Mr. Pukus was here, but he's left, I see. So, yeah, I'd like to open that up for any questions, if anyone would like to discuss it further. Otherwise, I move to keep this on first reading.
I don't think you...
I don't need a motion for that.
You just say you plan to keep it on first reading.
I plan to keep it on first reading, then.
All right, so no vote tonight. Seeing none, we'll move to miscellaneous, and I'd just like to toast our men and women who provide the city water. Spurious allegations in social media, you can't keep it from happening, but for them to besmirch our water department and our city water, I toast them and the good job that they do. Thank you very much. That brings us, Mr. Bastancic.
Just one thing, I just want to thank everybody who attended the infrastructure committee hearing today. I thought it was very productive, and appreciate everybody coming, and I especially appreciate the land, the homeowners' attendance. I think we got a lot done.
Yep. Mr. Myers?
Nothing further this evening.
Okay. Mr. Sanders?
Nothing further.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, I wanted to congratulate Councilman Bastancic on the good job he did with the public infrastructure committee meeting prior to the council meeting this evening. I want to thank Roger Kobelarsik, our city engineer, for putting together a packet of information that outlined how this came about. Residents had contacted, I know they'd contacted me, and they've contacted other council people then as a result. And I know I had walked some of the area all the way last spring, end of May, so I was very excited to see how far we've come. We've got some, we took all the options and possibilities into account, and I think we came up with a good solution, so looking forward to moving it one step further and seeing this get resolved up in the Mellon Circle, Mel Lane area. Thanks.
Ms. Warden?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Ansel?
Nothing more, Mr. President.
And... Mr. Cavan, last word.
Nothing to add.
And I'll have to add that Mr. Rooney, probably after having to wait for executive Sorry about your luck to catch tonight, but good seeing you, as always, Mr. Rooney. And I see Mr. Ansel move to adjourn. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Myers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.